And I'd like to bring the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees to order. It is 4:50 and the first thing on the agenda is Secretary's Report. We accept the Secretary's Report.
Make the motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay, do we hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Treasurers' Report, how are we doing, Colleen?
I'm good, okay, so first, first of all, you should be in on the, I copied your emails on the Google Drive, town budget for fiscal '21. So you should be able to get into that. But anyway, let me just start with our library reserve funds. We've got a total of $35,831.93. No big impact on that, although we should be getting the $3,000 grant money in the mail, so that will go in here. And I'll talk about that later because my concern as always is getting our hands on it.
Right.
You know, that's always an issue. Just the easy access to the money itself.
Can't they put it in our revolving account? Colleen?
I don't know anything about the revolving account.
The revolving account is what you take money out, that's our money.
I think that's what she's calling the reserve fund.
Oh, the reserve fund.
You mean the reserve fund, but we still have to voucher it, right?
Right. But we've no, they have never said no to us for anything like that.
Well, I had a no when I was working with Stephanie, when I had put a name on something to pay that person.
Yes, without a, without a bill or something, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know, I mean, I can correspond with the, I think the town accountant's gonna be pretty busy pretty soon, but I can correspond with him and see if there's an easy way to get cash.
Because, right.
Cause we have two things coming up. We have, at the end of February, we have a children's program that's gonna be like $425.
Right.
And, and then this, the expenses for this, you know, things like food, I mean, they approved food and drink and so, you know, getting the cash for that.
Could we use our petty cash for that? Why can't we use, why can't we ask the friends for that money?
Um, well, we can, we can ask them. I mean, they've been good about giving us money for the, you know, for the books reimbursing us. Judy just sent me a check for four hundred some.
I know, so.
Yeah, I can try the friends, I'll try the friends and I'll also talk to the accountant.
Okay.
Okay, so that's reserve. And then the other budget, I kind of took the balances and divided them by six, by how much time we've got left in this year's budget. And so let me just read them off to you. Salaries, so we've got $7,793 left in salaries and some change. If you divide that out by six, that gives us about almost $1,300 a month through the end of June. So that should be fine because we're not, I'm the only one getting paid, so.
Right.
Electricity, we, we find too, we have a balance of $895. If you divide that out, that gives you about $149. Actually, I take that back. That's per month and we pay it more often than, we pay it every other week. So we might, we might get a little bit short on that depending on how the electricity costs go.
We pay that every other week? Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Well, I've paid it, it's actually, let me see, I'm here. Maybe you're right, maybe it is a month, yeah.
Yes.
But, um, let me just see here. Eighty-nine-five, ten-seventeen. No, I guess you're right, I don't know why, there's one payment that was a little bit short of the month, but, okay, yeah, I, I think we'll be fine on that. We have 149 per month, you know, and it runs around, it runs around between
So we should be okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, we should be fine. Um, okay, what's next is the oil. And of course, we had a fairly large for the repair with the oil spill and the new pump. But this is just purely for oil. We just had a recent deposit, which is gonna be between $250 and $300. But as of right now, we have $2,055 in there. So if you divide that out through maybe the end of April, right? That would give us about 513 per month. So if the weather stays fairly mild, you know, we may do, ban that without a problem.
Excuse me, Colleen, what did you say we had in, in oil, 2055?
Yes.
Well, if I divided that by six, I get 342.
I, I didn't divide it by six, I divided it by four.
Oh, okay.
To the end of the winter months.
Okay.
Through the end of April.
All right.
For March and April. Okay, so the next one is building repairs and maintenance, of which, the building repairs and maintenance and, I believe, building systems. I drew on a few of these next three oil repairs. So we have, in building repairs and maintenance, we have 1,009 left. In building systems, we have 892 left. And in equipment repairs and maintenance, we have 136 left.
How mu, I'm sorry, equipment is how much?
It's about, so I'm not giving you the chain here, it's just the, it's 136.
Okay, so you already took the amount out for the pump, right?
Yes, and the labor.
Okay.
Okay, so then telecommunications, which is basically out of our budget, but it's been paid by the town. So as of November 28th, we've got 559 left in that, so that should be okay. The postage, we've got $49 left. So I think that will be okay. Administrative and office supplies is 7635, so we may run short on that depending on what comes up as far as needs. Basically, it's paper that we pay for mostly, but our toner may run out. So we may go over a little bit if the toner runs out. And then materials and books.
I just have one question, if we have, if, if our toner runs out, can't we take that out of equipment?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, the, the other, so we do, I mean, I always fudge at the end of the year and as far as accounts, which I guess we found out is fine. And sometimes the accountant takes items out of, like, of those three, building repairs and maintenance, building systems and equipment repairs and maintenance. Occasionally, the accountant will take it out of one of the, an account that I didn't take it out of.
Okay.
So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really change the total balance, it just changes the accounting figure out. And last but not least, we've got 4,682 left on.
Four thousand, say that again, I'm sorry, four thousand?
Four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two left in the materials budget, that's books, DVDs. I'm gonna be ordering quite a bit, you know, everybody, every library is kind of let up on their ordering a little bit. I mean, first it was the deliveries were hard to get. Now the deliveries have evened out, ours have been going to the town hall now, so I got that straightened out. And the fact that hopefully we'll be opening up, you know, in a month or two or three. Um, so people will be coming in again. I wanna have my new shelf, new bookshelf, you know, full of good new books and new DVDs. The other thing is that there haven't been great selections in DVDs, so I haven't ordered too many DVDs. But I will be starting that again because I do want to replenish, you know, our books and DVDs and get that going. I have some new ones that just came in and I'm working on the catalog those. So that's pretty much it, so I don't think, um, you know, thanks really to the pandemic, we've, I think everybody had money because our activity level is not the, really the same. You know, we have two of our staff members who aren't working and we have, we don't have any patrons coming in. So other than the furnace repair, which put a dent in some of the budget, we're not doing too bad. And the fact that, I mean, this is really, really, really important, I always stress this, the fact that we've had a mild winter so far.
Yeah.
So nothing's broken, the, you know, we've had enough oil, it hasn't been, you know, huge oil costs and things like that, so.
Yeah, but I stopped in on Tuesday and you had no heat because they didn't deliver.
I don't know why they didn't deliver because they have been delivering right along without, I, I said it must have been a mistake on their side because they deliver automatically. I mean, it was an aberration that they didn't deliver. I think I've had it happen one time before, but we are on their delivery route, their automatic delivery, so I don't know what happened there.
But did they come right away as soon as you called?
Yeah, he was pretty good. He, he was in the area and he came over and he went up and checked the furnace. I'm not sure why he did that, but it must be a newer guy, I don't know, cause I never.
I think, I, I, if I could be, I might be wrong, but I think when you run out of oil, they have to prime it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, okay, got it.
I think we lost our secretary.
No, I'm here.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just, I just shut the, I just shut the camera off because I'm looking at my computer screen and I just feel like I'm just like, oh, ah! It's okay, it's all right.
All right, I thought you were.
Nope, I'm here, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, keep going.
All right.
Correspondent.
We need, no, we're still on Treasurers' Report. We got an email, I, Colleen sent us, sent me an email from Peter about FY22. We need to set, working on a budget, so we need to set a date to sit down and work on a budget. So I would like to do that in person if anybody else agrees with that because, you know, hash it out instead of doing it over here on, on Zoom, but if we have to do it on Zoom. Or just a couple people sitting at, or two or three people sitting around. Right.
We do have the longer table in the children's room, so if there were just three, you know, three or four people, I think it would be okay.
Okay. Does anybody, who, who would like to be, who would like to be on it, to be?
I'll help out again.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and just a couple of things to think about, the, the pay rate for our staff, which is Meghan Mary basically, is on 1350 an hour from 1275, that's as of January.
Right.
And what else was I gonna say, so keep that in mind.
Who else volunteered to do it? I'm sorry, I missed that, and who else?
How about your pay rate? You automatically get a raise?
Pam Maloney, it was you?
I think the recommended raise was 2%.
Right.
2%, Peter said in the email, it's 2%. And they're looking for a flatlining on the operational things other than salaries.
Yeah, 2% on salary and rage, wage increases. Okay, that's good.
Yep.
Well, I'll help if it's a day that is agreeable and I'm available. I mean, I'm only busy one day a week, so. But, you know, a tight schedule. Okay, so what date is good for everybody? I'm pretty flexible, either a Tuesday or Thursday because Colleen's there.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are my absolute worst day going forward. The new semester has started at school and I'll be teaching online at 1:00 and at 7:00.
What about a Saturday? What about a Saturday?
I could, I could do a Saturday. I don't like doing Saturdays, but I could do a Saturday.
Saturdays are easier for me.
I mean, I'm just thinking if we did like a Saturday morning.
Okay.
How soon do you want to do it?
I, I don't know, I don't, I tried to look on here to see what it's do, but I don't see anything.
I don't think, I could be wrong, but I don't think the accountant has sent the forms out yet.
No, I, no, you, no, I haven't got anything yet, so I don't know.
Yeah, so I think they'll send out like an Excel form or a, no, probably a Google Drive, you know.
Yeah, like we did before.
Right, right.
I don't care what's good for everybody, I can't do it this Saturday, I have to have something do in my car.
I have that historic Excel document I made last time, so if we wanted to meet before the documents came in just to prepare.
Yeah, that would be great.
But.
Yeah, that was, you did a great job on that, Pam, that'd be great. How about the 23rd?
How's the 23rd?
Let me look. That looks good for me.
23rd? Gail?
Gail?
I can do it.
I'm looking at my phone.
Okay.
My calendar.
Wanna do it like nine o'clock, 10 o'clock in the morning, or?
Well, library opens at 10:00.
Wanna do it at 9:00?
Um, I can, I can get there earlier if you want me to.
Okay.
I mean, 9:00 is fine if people would rather do it at 9:00.
Yeah, okay, we'll do 9:00.
How many are doing it? Um, I've got Lynn, Colleen C., Colleen A., Gail, and Pam.
I know that Colleen A. has said the, like, fewer people there, so.
I know, we don't need, all need to be there, so I'll back out since all the youngsters are there. No, you can come, Gail, it's fine, you know. I think it's, I hope, it's, it's easier probably if there's only two or three, don't you think?
No, you. No, I think, I think we can all be there and I think we can all social distance. So I think Pam Thistle, I think your help would be good, I think everybody's help would be really good. Um, and we can social distance, I don't think we need to worry about that, so.
Well, it depends on, I, I don't know, are you comfortable with that, Pam? Or, I mean, is anybody not comfortable with that, though? I, I don't know.
I mean, I was just concerned for a week, so, I don't want to do that again. Well, let's, okay, I'll put it in my calendar unless.
Well, if you can, you know, if you can't come that day, if something happens, just let us know.
Yeah, I'll tell you, right, so I'll plan on coming, but as it gets closer, we'll see.
Okay.
If I get a better offer.
Yeah, we can, you know, one person could sit at the small table in there, one person could sit at the round table, two people could sit at the big table, so.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, we try to do a good job of spacing people out.
Yeah.
They feel comfortable.
Okay. Correspondents next on the list.
Um, I have two correspondents. And I, and, you know, I was rushing around and Evelyn did send me a note and I can't remember if I brought that up last month or not, it was just a quick note of hello.
We did get, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, okay, great. I just couldn't remember. Um, well, I have a note from.
Yes, we did, was that in last, the email from, not email, the minutes from last month?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, I got an email from Sergeant Salavardos, who runs the Worcester County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, yeah, your prisoners.
Program, the prisoner program. And he said, "I just wanted to let you know that we at the Worcester County Sheriff's Office Community Service Department did not forget about you and your need to help with any projects. As soon as this pandemic subsides and we start sending clues out for work, I will be sure to reach out to you so we can help. I hope all is well and if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to me." So that came December 30th. He sent that, he emailed that to me December 30th. And then I have another email from our Girl Scout page and that came December 27th. "Hello, I'm so sorry I haven't gotten back to you, I am no longer going to be involved in this project, but my fellow Girl Scout and friends will be taking over this project." I believe that she means her ideas for the children's room.
Oh, okay.
Probably the bench too, the outside bench. Their names are Tessa and Angelique. Tessa and Angelique are included in this message, so if you have any questions, you can send email to them. "I'm so happy to have found you and been able to start off this project with you." So that didn't work out for her or for us. And I sent her an email back. "Thank you for letting me know, it's nice to meet you and talk with you and have the healthiest of New Years." And then I contacted Tessa and Angelique. I said, "As you know, Paige gave me your names as two Girl Scouts interested in working on a project for the Millville Library. We are most interested in a Girl Scout taking in, or Scouts taking an interest in raising funds for an outdoor bench to place in front of the library. We would like to dedicate the bench to one of our former trustees. The project would involve raising around $200 and would like the bench to be out front of the library by the end of the summer. Let me know if this project you might be interested in." So I sent that on the 29th, so she emailed earlier. So I sent that to Tessa and Angelique and Angelique got back with me. She just said, "Yes, we would be interested." And then I sent another one to her saying, "Our next library trust meeting should be Thursday, January 14th. Would you like to sit in on the meeting with me and the trustees so we can explain further? If so, I'll arrange to send you the Zoom link." But they didn't get back to me, so.
Right.
And we're waiting.
Four kids are in, on Zoom all day, right? Or are they in school?
Yeah, and I think they're so out of the, their schedule that
Right.
Things come and go and they, so I don't know whether we should pursue this or whether we should just take money out of our reserve account to pay for the bench and go forward with that. And then if they're interested in something for the children's room and they do, get back with me, you know, we can pursue that.
And I think she should contact like you, she doesn't have to like, you know, you can relay our decision. It seems like, I, if I were a kid, I wouldn't want to do a Zoom meeting with trustees, right? Wouldn't it be simpler if you were the liaison for this?
Sure.
I mean, I don't know how, what everybody else feels.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I, you know, my thinking is, I don't know how interested people are gonna be until things open up.
Exactly.
You know?
Right.
But, but it's good to start that conversation, to keep them in the loop, to, you know.
Right.
Because I do.
I would love to take the money out of our account and do a bench, but I don't know how.
I second that, I second that. If we, if we have the money, I, I just feel like we've been waiting so long for this.
And, and Evelyn, I mean, I realize that Jimmy was a trustee, I'm Ben, you know, we're all trustees, but she really was the driving force for.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, she is very extraordinary.
I was just gonna ask if we were gonna do anything for Jimmy.
What?
I was just gonna ask if we were gonna do anything for Jimmy.
Right. I mean.
I think we can do something separate for Jimmy that we can talk. That might be something that he really appreciates.
Right.
You know, that's according to his state in life right now, you know? Think of something probably that would be beneficial, that he would really enjoy. So maybe that's a conversation for next time.
Right, right. Colleen, you could ask Cam.
Yeah.
If flowers or plant or is he getting around?
I know he's in a different room now and he has a roommate.
Where is he?
Do we want to vote on the bench? Do we want to vote on the bench first?
Yeah, getting back to the bench.
Okay.
I have two nomination and a second for us to take the money out of revolving. Wait, here a nomination, none. Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Okay, so I will start looking for a bench. I have a third communication and that, Peter just emailed me, Peter did, Colleen and I were in on a capital planning meeting.
Oh, yes.
And Peter said, "I know someone who can give you estimates on the work that you want done, I'll send you his name." Well, it's Paul Olet and I think I've heard that name before, so, no, wait, he's not the one that went, is that, is that the Paul that went to Boston with us?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The one that has that big pile of mulch in the front, right?
Oh, is that Paul?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
So estimates for, did they approve the library for the bathroom?
No, they want more information, so we, we will talk about that, they want more information.
But what, what worker is he talking about?
Um, well, the bathroom. What, what he said was, "We need more detail, it, it needs to be more accurate and, and more detailed."
Oh, okay, okay.
So we talked about the furnace, we talked about the bathroom, we talked about the shed. Is, and anything else? A lot about the furnace.
Right.
Window sills. And the sign.
The sign outside and the ceiling, some of the ceiling tiles, that's.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
In the, in the windows.
Windows, I'm sorry, the windows outside, right. So Peter wants more, just more, the capital planning meeting, the members want more detail and more accurate detail.
So he's going to, what is Paul Olet gonna do?
I guess he's gonna come and give me a better estimate, I'll email him to try to set up a time.
Oh, he's gonna help you with the estimate without getting it from a contractor? Well, Paul is a contractor.
He is a contractor, I mean, I guess that's the whole point, that Peter feels that Paul is somebody who does this stuff around the town, like he fixes things, that's what it didn't, you get that impression, Colleen?
Yeah, he, that's his job, he's a handyman.
Yeah.
Oh, he's, but he's not necessarily someone who's gonna replace the toilet and the sink and the bathroom.
Well, they could bid that.
He could.
Wouldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, he could, he could do it, we could ask somebody else to, we just need, we need some information because they were, thought that we put in $12,000 for the furnace in the bathroom and they thought that was kind of on the low side.
Wow, Peter.
So they thought that we should get more detail on how much it's gonna cost to have the furnace and it, get it installed, the, the bathroom and, you know, and all that, whatever we need in there and so.
And the furnace is maybe something we could discuss at the financial meeting, can we do that? Just because, there's a lot of issues surrounding the furnace, like when was the furnace put in? So how old is it? And they did, the Peterson guy that came, the second guy that came, who seemed like more of a master kind of technician, I asked him about the furnace and he said he didn't think it was in too bad a shape. Now that was after I had already submitted the request to the town, but I would want to talk with them again to find out exactly what they think about the furnace and the life of the furnace. Because I think it's important, you know, it's, you know, like if we decided to wait a year on the furnace, will there be money in the town next year to submit the furnace? I mean, is this?
If it was downstairs, you could look at it and see, oh, is it, is the oil?
That's the second issue is.
Right.
Is this gonna create more problems in the future if we leave it upstairs? Or is it fine to leave it upstairs? And should we, because that's, that's gonna be big expense. That's a lot of movement, that's moving the stuff out of the back room, it's creating a safe space in the back. That's a lot of movement, that's moving the stuff out of the back room, it's creating a safe space in the back room. It's, then we need the shed outside. We, I absolutely have to have it because we've got stuff in that back room, as we all know. And so, you know, I think there, we need to discuss it further.
Right, because the sheds, I mean, the furnace has been upstairs for, well, this is the second one, right? For thirty-six years.
Now, do you remember when we had this? I thought the one we have is the original, but I guess it isn't. Do you remember when this one was put in?
From Basque or Consumers, was it them?
I mean, well, I know Basque put the oil tank in. Remember, we had to have the oil tank changed.
Oil tank.
Oil tank, that came from Basque.
Is there a little tag hanging on, like on my furnace is a little tag with every time you have it serviced?
I'm not going up on that ladder. Not going up there. It is a really tall ladder.
Oh, my God.
I just got terrified that this guy that came, the oil guy, he was very cavalier and he went on that ladder and it wasn't properly opened. And I thought, God, please don't, we don't need a lawsuit here or anything. My boss is rich. I think we were playing with the really Petersons that's been.
Because I don't think we ever went for a capital. You know.
I remember replacing was the oil tank, not the furnace itself, but I could be wrong. That's what I said to Colleen last night.
Yeah, so.
But we, probably, we also must have records on the furnace in somewhere in the files.
Yeah, this is why we need that manual I said about, right? Easily go, it's right behind the desk. We just, and it's on, drive, and you just go in and see. So I will document that when I find it out. It might just take a little bit of digging to find it out. It seems like, you know, this is just foggy estimate. It seems like somewhere I saw. That there was another furnace put in.
Yeah, I vaguely, you know, thirty-six years, so. I can't imagine the furnace upstairs is thirty-six years old, or they would be telling us to change it.
Well, they couldn't imagine it either, right, Colleen?
Miracle, yeah.
That we didn't change it, but.
Well, I'll see what I can find and, you know, it's a meeting.
Okay, we'll try to get, call Colleen, uh, call Evelyn. I'll call her or Colleen.
We gotta climb up there and take a look at it. We can. You know, to your point, though, about the capital planning, you know, even if it, even if we find out it can be replaced next year, I think that's still part of why we go to capital planning. So that they can put it in for what we need next year.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think my feeling is we probably should put it in, that, you know, it's. It's just an important part of this.
When they talked about it last night, put it all in and because it is in different parts, you know, bathroom, furnace. And that, they could section and say, okay, we're gonna, you know, the library's asking for thirty thousand. Or we're gonna give them twelve because they're doing the furnace and something else. Or are they doing the bathroom or something?
So if we were smart, maybe we'd really overhaul the bathroom. And somehow connect the furnace room to the bathroom, or I don't know. I don't know.
Maybe Paul will have some ideas. He, you know, he's used to looking at buildings and different scenarios. So that's, you know, we're working, that's a work in progress. So that's it for my communication.
Librarians report?
I saw that you had the, the cultural council grants on. I have not heard, I don't, has anybody heard about any cultural council grants yet?
No, I think they're meeting this week. Are you Pam? I'm sorry.
Next week.
How many did we end up submitting, Colleen?
I think I've submitted four and Meg submitted one.
Okay, five in total, okay.
And mine, and mine.
Six. Okay, good.
Yeah, and I, I have thought about, you know, I haven't done this yet, actually, we talked about it before, so it's my, my fault, but. So I will also ask, I would like to do, I, I think it'd be nice to do a Valentine's Day. Reef or something. If you want to. Which I, I think would be maybe in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty range. Where, you know, we get a few kits and they could take them home and then do the Zoom thing. The thing that Anna suggested before for Christmas that we didn't do. So I, I'll look into that and see how much she would charge us for, let's say, ten to twelve packages and the video.
Oh, and kids could come and pick them up and.
Yeah, the families would pick them up, take them home, do the video with her. That's what she did for Christmas anyway. I'm sure she wouldn't mind doing a Valentine's Day one because it's kind of a.
Valentine's wreath where they got all the supplies from the dollar store. I'll show it to you.
That sounds cool.
Yeah, let me find it.
Oh, that's pretty. Oh, that is pretty.
They're like a rubbery type rose that is actually glued on to the hat shaped frame.
Oh, that's cool.
That's pretty.
That's really cool.
Paying from the dollar store. They said you need. You'd need the wire wreath. Felt for the blacking if you want that. This is six packages of foam roses.
Oh, so you're looking at maybe like less than ten dollars?
Right, so you need six, yeah, seven.
Yeah, less than ten dollars, yeah.
To make that.
That's pretty. What's it on? What kind of frame is it on? It's on a, I'm not crafty at all, so I don't.
Let me find it. It's a wire frame.
It's a wire frame, okay. How much are those? It's all at the dollar store. Oh, okay.
You just get it all at the dollar store.
So who would want to do the video to do that?
Instead of having Anna do it? We would do it?
Yeah, who was gonna, who were you gonna have do it? You know, we can get the supplies, I could even get the.
She's very, I am, I am not a craft person. I'm, I'm terrible.
Pam, Pam Thistle, would you do it?
I could, but I, it's a Zoom thing. I have trouble with Zoom things because I can't point to them. I tried, I tried doing that. And all I have is my little tablet. I don't have a big computer that I can work on. Because right now I have only four people here. Lynn and Pam are on page two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have to go back and forth to Lynn and Pam.
Because I keep eating.
I can, I can work with Meg, definitely.
Yes, I like it. The only thing with the dollar store, Pam, I'm letting you know, I tried to, sometimes they run out of.
Thinking that.
Materials quickly.
It depends on how many kids. Are gonna do this.
Yeah, and we don't, and we don't know. We'd have to, I mean, we could have them register. But then if they registered and we couldn't get the materials, that would be a problem if we had. You know, ten registered and we only had materials for eight or something. So I think we'd almost have to get the materials first. I mean, I would say no more than ten or twelve, right, at the most.
Well, I, I just signed up for a craft at the Blackstone Library and they, they. They could sign up on the fourth. I had to wait till the eleventh because I was, wasn't a Blackstone resident, but I think they were only taking like twelve.
Yeah, I don't think we need.
What did you sign up to do?
It's a hot something. You gotta use a hair dryer and paint and I said, oh, that sounds pretty cool.
Oh, that sounds like a lot of work.
Okay, what else? I gotta go. I'm so sorry. It's almost five thirty. I can't believe I gotta go soon.
So let's talk about that later, maybe. Okay, just two other things I have to report. Well, the Anna report, I haven't heard. Usually the town sends me a form. I haven't gotten anything from them yet. That should be coming. And the capital planning meeting, it sounded, it kind of sounded like it might be the beginning of February, did you think?
Talking about the, probably the next one could be as close as the twenty-fifth, but I'm saying if it's that week, it's the very last week in February. I mean, in January. I was looking at February, you're probably right.
Right, well, I just wanted to, the last two things. The, the ALA grant check should be coming for three thousand dollars. It's quite involved. So, I mean, usually when we get money, they're gonna give you a lot to do surrounding it. And so we have to, I have to plan the walks for the summer. It would be a minimum three summer walks we'd plan. Right now, you have to take a short course, so it's like five modules that I've been doing online. Plus two Zoom meetings to explain the marketing and this and that. But Pam, they do have on the ALA site for this grant, they have publicity material, so. They said that they're easy to work with, they're a text and a logo. We have to, this is to announce that we got it. If we want to send it out to the papers, if we wanted to. So I don't know if Pam, would you be willing to work with me on that?
Over whatever they send you, I can put something.
Okay, that's great. Now, I've submitted a, so there's gonna be a lot of planning for this, so that will be upcoming. The first walk should be the end of June. And it will, we're gonna invite for one walk the Council on Aging, for another Peter and the Town Administrators, and for the third, the school. Principal and people from the school. Okay, I submitted another grant. A CARES, it's a CARES grant, CARES Act grant through MBLC. And my idea, and this was, I had the junior friends in mind. My idea was to do a portable story walk around town. So you pick a book. You reproduce pages from the book and you do, you walk the story, right? So you have posts at different places in town where the kids walk. And they read the first page of the story, and then they walked another time and they read the second, the story. So I submitted a request for twelve hundred dollars for a video camera for vlogging, for putting. You know, something up on YouTube. I submitted money for the actual pine pillars, for the plyboards to go across, for the. Covering for the page of the book. For the screws. And some money for labor. So even though, I don't know, twelve hundred doesn't seem like very much, but that's pretty much what it added up to. You could grant, get the grant for like a thousand. So that's in the works. I haven't heard whether we're gonna get that or not.
That's really cool. We did a, we did a story walk like that at Walden Pond last year and it was, it was really cool. My kids enjoyed it a lot.
Yeah, I was looking at a parents book called My Town. Where, you know, I thought for every page, like stop at the post office, we could stop at the police station. Well, but the school is not in, really in town. That's a little bit different. Dark, you know, so I'm still kind of looking for a book idea for it that really works well. But that was my thinking, it'd be really neat if we could get one that walks the kids around town, right? So they get familiar with their town. So we, we wouldn't, this isn't gonna be like a, a group of us doing it. This is gonna be out there for parents to do with their preschool children. Gardeners and their, so this isn't, this is for individual families. You, you put it up. And then you let them do it. They go read it with their kids, right?
Yeah, we would just do like the promotion around it so people knew to come.
Right, well, we'd have to build it and we'd have to get permission for the town to make sure we could put these posts around. But then they do it on their time. I mean, that's why, the whole idea was to try to get them engaged. But not have a program where we're gonna be, where he's gonna be together because of this environment that we're in. So, yeah, we'll see what happens.
Cool idea.
It's a big thing in the library world now. They're doing them a lot. Around different towns, yeah. So I guess that's the last thing that I have.
We talked about capital planning already, so we're all set. Building concern, septic, I'm gonna ask again.
Thank God.
If it's in trouble, that means a lot. If only the librarian is using.
Is the septic tank, I mean, is there something that we should put in for capital planning with?
No, I, I think we're all set because you have the only one there and basically.
Bubbled over one year when there was a lot of rain. Rainy, 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 and they tested the septic system in the middle of all of that. And then, so we said, oh, we might have a problem, but it's never had water near it since the flooding or.
Okay, okay, good. The furnace, as I said, I'm gonna have to dig through records and see what I can find on that and talk with Petersons more, so.
The pest guy, do I need to contact him and get him back in there? Or, or sign a contract with him or?
Our, our contract ends at the end of the year. In April, I believe, the end of April, or actually. So it's not until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, never mind. Let's see, the other thing is, if, when you call Paul, we got mentioned about the window sills. I know that's on here too, so. And the other thing is, do we want to wait? I mean, the painting outside really needs to be done, especially the vestibule outside. But do we want to wait for the prisoners or do we want to get somebody to do that?
Well. We can't do it now, right?
No, no, but I'm just thinking, should we have Paul, you know, give us an estimate on that when he comes down? And, you know, just to say, okay, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars and we have the paint. Remember, we already got the paint, so we don't have to worry about that. Yeah, I would say get an estimate from Paul, sure. And, you know, we might hear from the, the prisoners, you know, in July and say, okay, we're ready to roll and we can come and paint, but who knows?
So that would be for the window trim and the outside, or just the outside?
Yeah, because I remember, we, we remember when Lincoln and Paul were looking at the building one day and they were saying it needs painting. And that was about a year and a half ago.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got the paint because we thought the prisoners were coming, so.
And then the virus came.
And I can't imagine that the prisoners will be here unless every other place says, no, you can't come and we welcome them, so.
Right, right. Well, they're all getting the vaccination before we are, so. Okay. What else? All right, let's see, building, oh, business, we talked about the bench, so that's okay. Junior friends? Anything going on, Pam?
Yeah, not really. I, I've now got Clover helping out with some of the social media posts that the library.
I haven't looked at the Instagram.
We have a, you know, we're followed by an awful lot of libraries, but it's fun. You can see kind of what other people are doing and it gives some fun ideas. Is the password the same as the Facebook password? Yeah, you can, should just be able to log in with the same credentials that you have for the.
And is that your dog?
And is that your dog? It is, sorry.
Um.
Oh, gosh, she's in the other room. Let me go yell at her.
Okay, um, senior friends group, we haven't heard anything, so I guess we'll say it's still on. Um, did you, did, did, and I, I didn't send them an invitation to this meeting. I don't know if anybody else did.
No, post, I posted it. You know.
Oh, okay, you posted it with the town, you're right, okay.
Yeah. Okay, new business, uh, five-year plan, that's something we need to work on. Um, so I think my personal thing, I think we need to do budget first and then do five-year plan because that, the town's gonna be asking for that, so.
The five-year plan also tied in with the strategic plan for the MBLC?
Yeah.
Because we have to do that, or we're not gonna be able to get any, um, LSTA grants. Um, so, um, and I, you know, I was talking to Alyssa about this. Um, Lisa, I think, had done a survey, a community survey. So maybe if we're doing these summer walks, a good time to do that survey would be in the summer.
Right.
And then when we get that information back, we can do a better strategic plan, I think. So I'm thinking we should move that out a little bit. Um, so I've gotta find the timing, the timing required, you know, like, when does this plan need to be in? And I don't know that right now.
Well, we'll, we'll worry about the budget, which is the twenty-third, so we'll get that, get that squared out and done. Okay, who's up for reelection this year?
Me.
Oh, you?
Anyone else?
I don't know. Am I? Like, what do I have to do?
We got something in, uh, in the mailbox, right, with our census thing that said.
You would have gotten a separate letter that said that you were up for having to run again.
Oh.
You got a letter?
Yeah, I got a letter.
I didn't.
Because we never got those before.
Huh.
No, I, I mean.
I just got reappointed, so.
Yeah, it's, I think it's one position, one position is up every year and the term I ran for last year was the unexpired term, which expires this year, so I have to run again.
Right, okay.
So it's just one. Did you get this?
Yeah.
It was in my mailbox.
Mm-hmm.
With all the annual town election and all.
So, Colleen, is there anything I need to do then to become the permanent or?
Be good until we have to wear it again.
Well, well, as soon as we find out who our, um, person is going to be, if the person that we talked about, it will take the position, I will let Peter know and then we can do the transition over.
So the main thing is that if, that, that position would then be open, would, would Alyssa actually get appointed? Should be appointed from now until the end of the term, so she would have to pull papers now to run, to be on it for next year.
Hmm.
Right.
Why? Because the term she's on is expiring? Who she's replacing is expiring?
Somebody, so she.
Be killing Lynn's, whatever Lynn has left.
Right.
No, Jim's. Oh, yes, right. Yeah, no, sorry. You're right, Lynn's. Yes, you're right.
Who do you have left, Lynn?
I have no clue.
I think it's only one up is not, only one person.
Mine was up. Mine was gonna be up this year, which Pam took mine. So mine would open up this year. So Lynn, you should be next year because Pam was last year.
So then she'll be appointed until next year, right?
Right, right, yes. Whoever we decide, or whoever accepts it, yes.
Right, right.
Excepts it would be appointed till whatever, May or June or whatever.
Right.
Have to run for next year and then they'd have to run again after that.
Right, right. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, whoever tells the person who we've nominated, um, about being nominated, let her know too that she'll have to run again next year.
Yeah, and then, and then we'll have to figure out the whole papers thing because the, the position's not open yet, so you can't technically go pull out papers for your job, for your role yet, until we.
But they, what they might do is they might just appoint somebody to the next, I don't know, we'll see. I don't know. That's something I have to talk with Peter about.
Well, what did they do the last time? It just happened.
I, yeah, I got appointed for about a month or two and then I had to pull papers and I ran. And then it was the same thing. I think I started in September, I pulled papers in January and then I got elected for a year.
Right. Because that's how the term was, right, for.
Yeah, because an appointment for an elected position is only until the end of the, that term.
Right.
Oh, not to finish out the term, it's just.
Just to finish out until the election.
And, and when would the, so when would she have to, um, when, when would her term be finished out if we appointed her?
So that, that's why I think you might need to talk to Peter, because it's my understanding that if you wanna be in the election for April, you need to have your papers in by the beginning of February.
That seemed, that, I don't.
Well, what's it say in your paper, Gail? You got the blue paper.
It says here.
The only position open is mine.
By one three-year term.
What, but when do the papers have to be in by?
Oh, it doesn't say that.
Oh.
So yours is the one that's up this year.
Yeah, I went down to get the papers the other day.
Right, so they would appoint her for, and for the rest of the term for?
No, I, I mean, I don't know if you can request that, you can appoint her for the rest of the term, but generally how it would work, we should be appointed until the rest of this fiscal year.
Right, because I think in the past, I, I'm not a hundred percent, but when it's happened before, they finish the term and then, I think, but I don't know.
Yeah, just not for me last time.
For next year, she should have one more year. Me? Lynn, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Lynn, yeah.
I don't know.
Really?
Yeah, because it would have been me this year. Pam was last year, so you're next year.
Right.
Oh, God, I don't know.
So it's not, yeah, so she fills the unexpired term, otherwise we wouldn't be, you know, this way it staggers everyone.
Right.
I know what Pam, Pam Maloney was saying, there might be, end up being two people on the ballot. The new person to finish Lynn's term and, and then Pam's three-year term.
Yeah, but I think it depends on how soon you let the board of selectmen know, like, they're meeting next week, but if you don't, if they don't make that decision until after the papers are due, then I don't know what happens.
Uh, quick, quick thing, uh, I got about fifteen minutes before I need to start the next meeting for Finance Committee.
Oh, yeah, we'll be done.
We're done now, okay. Alex, I have one more thing and that's it.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and I just wanna go back, because don't they have them fill the unexpired term?
We're gonna have to find out.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's why I have to ask, because when you appoint them, I don't think that's the case.
Okay, let's find out. All right, what else, Colleen?
So I just need to know, do I need to tell her, Alyssa, that she needs to go to the town hall to get papers?
No, no.
No, you got, first thing we need to find out is she, whoever is going to accept.
Say yes, then they'll appoint her.
Then I've gotta talk to Peter. Okay, I've, I've gotta talk to Peter and I, he's, the town hall's not open tomorrow.
Okay, so I mean, it might be a week or.
Right. Okay. Yeah. All right, the last thing I have is vaccine. Uh, I remember reading somewhere that, um, that Colleen, Mary and Meg were gonna be eligible to get the vaccine through Millville.
Right.
Have you heard it?
I got the email about that and they asked, Carrie took the name, our names and the names of our family members, but I haven't heard anything.
All right.
I think it'll be soon. Because they go by, Leo just got, he's a reserve in Norfolk Police and he just got, they did it yesterday, so.
Okay.
They must have done all town, essential employees, police and fire.
Okay, yeah.
Haven't heard anything, okay. Uh, that's the last thing I had. Uh, anybody else have anything under other? No? Okay, hearing none. Our next meeting is scheduled for February eleventh, four thirty.
That's my mother's birthday.
That good for everybody?
Yeah.
I think so. All right. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting at, uh, five forty-eight.
Back in it.
Okay. Motion's been seconded. Do I hear all in favor?
I am in favor.
Okay, all right. All set, Alex?
So when is our, the twenty-third meeting? What time is that? Ten?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay, good.
Alex, did you hear me? I don't know if you heard me or not.
Oh, no, what'd you say?
We're all set.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Alex.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.